Welcome to City Council, everybody. We will start with our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. And our invocation tonight will be given by Patam Asters, Pastor Adam Stetson from Christ Lutheran Church. And please rise. Thank you. If he's here. Looks like not. Get a volunteer. No volunteers. All right, I will give our invocation. Our dear Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this wonderful day and for beautiful spring weather that we're enjoying in Boulder City. And we're thankful for our wonderful, amazing community and for all of the blessings that we enjoy here, the camaraderie we have, the citizen participation and diligent, hard-working staff in Boulder City. We pray that Thy Spirit will be with us tonight, that we will have wisdom and good dialogue and understanding, that we will make good decisions and chart a course that will lead to the best interests of our community at large. We're thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy and the good circumstances in which we can assemble and meet together. And we invoke Thy blessings upon us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have, in our public announcement portion, we do have some swearings in, I believe, at least one.
There's two swearing ins, but I would like to just announce under public announcement to remind residents that early voting in City Hall starts tomorrow, Wednesday, May 29th, and extends through Saturday, June 1st. Hours are eight, I'm sorry, seven to six on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and eight to six on Saturday. You can early vote at other sites. That information's available on our website. And I would kindly ask, when the meeting's adjourned, if we could get everybody out in a timely manner so our staff can get the council chambers set up. They'll be here at 5:00. Thank you. And with that, I will administer the oaths to our new reserve police officer, Jesse Oliver, and our new marshal. If you would each raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Michael Brown.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, protect, and defend
Support, protect.
the Constitution and government of the United States
Constitution and government of the United States.
and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada
Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
against all enemies,
against all enemies.
whether domestic or foreign,
whether domestic or foreign.
and that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty.
to the same
To the same.
any ordinance, resolution, or law
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
of any state notwithstanding
Of any state notwithstanding.
and that I will perform well and faithfully
And that I will perform well and faithfully.
all the duties of marshal and reserve police officer
All the duties of marshal and reserve police officer.
of Boulder City, Nevada
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
on which I am about to enter
On which I am about to enter.
so help me God
So help me God.
under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Congratulations to both of you and thank you in advance for your service to our community. We appreciate it.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I announced Friday it was seven to six, but it is, early voting's eight to six. I apologize.
So, seven to six, Wednesday, Thursday?
Eight to six, Friday, Saturday.
Eight to six, Friday, Saturday. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our initial public comment period devoted to agenda items only. In the back, please. Yep.
Hello, Council. My name is Linda Barnett. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number 14, Appointments to the Utility Committee. Firstly, I would like to thank the Council for voting to bring the Utility Committee forward. Each of you deserves great thanks from us. I ask tonight that the Council, before deciding on the appointments for the Utility Committee, take the time to interview each applicant before making your decisions. It's only fair that if we are asking these applicants to commit to spending untold hours of their time over a period of years providing a voluntary service to the community, that the least the Council can do is to set aside 15 or so minutes per candidate to examine and establish their credentials so that the most qualified individuals are selected. In reviewing the volunteer data sheets filled out by the applicants, it's obvious that a minimum of questions are on this one-page form. Instead of possibly asking about community activities, perhaps it would be more pertinent to ask if there are any conflicts of interest and why the applicant feels qualified to sit on the committee. I also ask each Council member tonight to please disclose any conflicts of interest involving any of these candidates, letting us know any business ties or past or present. It may be that a Council member will need to disclose and abstain from voting on a particular candidate. Additionally, as a small side note, I question why the volunteer data sheet published online in the Agenda Packet includes the addresses and phone numbers of each of the candidates. I have yet to see the Council or city employees have their personal information made public. I ask that this be addressed in addition to informing applicants that their volunteer data sheets will be made public in the Agenda Packet. We have a blank slate before us tonight with the formation of the Boulder City Utility Committee. Let's make a proper start by giving thoughtful attention and preparation. Again, I request that the applicants be interviewed before any appointments are made. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
James Howard Adams, talking also on Item Number 14 regarding the Utility Advisory Committee. I got an email from Judy Deschane this morning. She can't be here because she's enjoying time with her family out of state, but she wanted me to make sure that everybody knew she was watching and that she strongly supports Greg Todd, George Re, Larry Carr, Eileen Wilkerson, and Marty Riel for the Utility Committee. They have shown a great amount of commitment and many of them have been involved, working on these utility issues for 12 to 18 months with the Ad Hoc Committee. They have experience with utility matters and sincerely want to help Boulder City citizens. Having a successful committee could help restore citizens' trust in what the city does. I have to agree with Judy. She has, I have been to a few of these Ad Hoc Committee meetings as well. These members have shown a great deal of commitment. They really do show an understanding of a lot of the issues. And I think it's important that we have this committee because transparency is what everybody has been asking for. That's the big issue, the big buzzword, transparency. This is the next step in that process to making sure that people feel confident that when we're talking about our utility rates, that they are being put in place fairly and justly. And this is the first step to that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay, we'll close our initial public comment period. And I neglected to mention, but now's a good time, that we have Councilwoman Peggy Levitt and Councilman Warren Harhey on the phone. Can you, both of you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I can hear everybody.
All right, we can hear you loud and clear, too. Okay, so next, we have our approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk.
I would like to request that the Council move Item Number 17 to follow Item Number 10, please.
Did you say 17? Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Counsel?
Move to approve with changes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
And Counsel?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are on then to, well, we have some, I think it's fourth graders in the audience, correct? Can you all stand up so we can see you and recognize you? Not fourth graders? What graders are you? Are you, are they here for, are you here for the recognitions tonight? All right. You did look a little bit big to be fourth graders to me, but I'm used to that. Used to fourth graders. All right, so welcome. We're going to recognize you a little bit later, too. So, thank you for coming tonight. All right, so we are on to a bunch of bill introductions. Item Number 8 is Introduction of Bill Number 1849. Madam City Clerk? Or, sorry.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce that bill, Mayor. That's Bill Number 1849 with the introduction and waive the reading except for title.
Bill Number 1849, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend the zoning map to rezone approximately 1,155 acres in the El Dorado Valley Transfer Area from GO Government Open Space to ER Energy Resource, Bill Number 1849 will be considered at the June 10th regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Next is Item Number 9, Introduction of Bill Number 1850. And I'll go ahead and introduce that bill and waive the reading except for title.
Bill Number 1850, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, amending portions of Title II, Chapter 8, debt obligations by deleting it from Title II-8 and moving it to Title I, Chapter 9, Section 13, Financial Administration, and renumbering the subsequent chapter. This bill will also be considered at the June 10th regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Next is Item Number 10, Introduction of Bill Number 1851.
I'll introduce Bill Number 1851, waive the reading except for title.
Bill Number 1851, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, amending Title II by creating a new Chapter 9 titled Administrative Services Department. This bill will also be considered at the June 10th, 2019, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Next is Item Number 17, Introduction of Bill Number 1852. I'll go ahead and introduce that and waive the reading except for title.
Bill Number 1852, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, approving Amendment Number 94-A313-B to Agreement Number 94-A313-A between the City of Boulder City and Clark County to amend the Boulder City Conservation Easement Boundaries. And this bill will also be considered at the June 10th regular meeting.
Thank you very much. Next is Item Number 11, Presentation of Certificates of Award for the St. Andrews Council of the Knights of Columbus Youth Contest Winners. Come on up. Looks like we've got some hardware there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Robert Hartman. I'm representing the St. Andrews Council, Number 807A of the Knights of Columbus, and also the Nevada State Council. For a number of years, we've run several contests here locally. One of them is the basketball free throw. And just a word on that, this year, we had 276 kids locally compete. And that was roughly about half the number, the total number of kids that participated in the state. And so I've got two basketball free throw trophies to award. And the first goes to Logan Tolman.
Is Logan here?
His mother called me earlier this evening and said he may be a little bit late. We also had another one, and this is Michaela Nelson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And folks, the way this little lady shot, the Lady Rebels are going to be seeking her out in a few years. The next contest we had was the soccer challenge. And we had one winner from the state. And this is Kaylee Donahue.
Is Kaylee here? No?
I don't know. I may have to have Chief Shea's assistance in tracking some of these kids down. The last contest we had, and I'm really proud of this one because we had, there's four classifications. And the first one is substance or alcohol abuse, and that's ages 8 through 11. And what they did with each of the trophies is they took the painting that the kids made and incorporated it into the plaque. And out of the four classifications, Boulder City kids came home with all four. The 8 to 11-year-old winner for alcohol abuse is Lily McKay. Congratulations. The next winner is the drug abuse poster contest winner, age group 12 to 14, Cooper Holton. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the alcohol abuse poster contest, age 12 to 14, Jeremy Farrell. I think Chief Shea and I are going to be pretty busy. And last but not least is the drug abuse poster contest, age 8 to 11, Kira DeLong. And I would like to thank the staff at the Garrett Junior High School for helping us out with these contests and giving us a venue. I think Boulder City can be very proud of its educational system, especially with the junior high school and their tireless effort towards educating these young people and giving them a good starting place. And who knows, Mr. Mayor, one of these days, one of those kids is going to be sitting in your chair.
All right. How about today? So, we're going to invite Michaela, Lily, Cooper, and Kira up. And we'll take some pictures with you if you want to come up. And we'll invite Council to step down. I noticed that a couple of these certificates, well, the ones, all the ones on the poster winners say alcohol. I think maybe we need to correct a couple of those. But we'll give them to you nevertheless, and we'll get them fixed. Congratulations to all of you. Does anybody want to give a speech? All right, Ellen, thanks for coming tonight. And maybe, do you want him to take those with him? To, with the trophies? Maybe you should take these certificates if you're going to track down the trophies winners. Certificates could go with them. And thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. We're on to Item Number 12, Matters Pertaining to the 2018 Private Activity Bond Volume Bond Cap.
Hello, good evening. My name is Melanie Evans. I'm with Nevada Rural Housing Authority. I'm the Programs Manager for Home at Last. And we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. We initiated our Down Payment Assistance Program for single-family homes in 2006. And since that time, we've assisted over 8,100 families with over $1.6 billion in mortgages, that's billion with a B, and $46.7 million in down payment assistance. We have assisted 16 homeowners with down payment assistance right here in Boulder City and a total of 1,277 families in the community. That's all of Clark County. Let's see. Through this assistance, we've brought an investment of over $3.2 million to your city. And we've brought an investment of $295 million to your community. Today, we are requesting that Boulder City's allocation of Private Activity Bond Cap, or PABC for short, of $827,741.58. NRHA pools these funds with allocations of PABC we receive from other cities and counties around the state to fund single-family programs like the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. So, the MCC allows a qualified home buyer to claim a direct tax credit of up to $1,000 annually on his or her home based on the current 10% MCC rate. So, home buyers can use this credit to increase their annual income to allow them more purchasing power. And it can also help reduce their debt-to-income ratio as well. The transfer of PABC does not create any obligation or debt for the city. And I think that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you. Do you want to introduce your companion, too?
Sure, this is Sophia. She's my assistant.
All right.
You want to say hello?
Welcome, Sophia. Counsel, any questions or comments? Anybody on the line? Have any comments? All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was the question?
All right. We have, so you're moving for Resolution 6939. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much
Thank you very much.
for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. All right. Next is Item Number 13, Matters Pertaining to the Tentative and Final Budgets. We have Diane Pelletier, our Finance Director, to introduce that.
Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Agenda Item 13 has four parts to it. And I'm just going to read what those are and then we're going to have a short PowerPoint presentation. But Part A is Public Hearing for the tentative, for the 1920 Tentative Budget. The notice for this public hearing was published on May 17th in the Las Vegas Review-Journal. Item B is Resolution 6940, which establishes the classification titles and position ranges as required by the City of Boulder City Municipal Code. Item C is Discussion and Approval of the Fiscal Year 1920 Final Operating and Capital Budgets. And Resolution D is the Resolution Cleaning Up This Year's Budget for Some Miscellaneous Items That Occur Each Year. And it's just to clean up the housekeeping on our budget for this year. So, with that, we can start with the PowerPoint. First thing I'd like to talk about is how we got to today. And actually, we started last July in discussions on the Capital Improvement Program. And throughout the summer, last summer, we met with the directors, department directors, and listed the next five years' worth of capital needs. That adoption of that tentative capital improvement plan took place on November 27th, 2018. And between that November meeting and we worked on the budget starting in February, we actually did a computer upgrade. So, we were pretty busy over the holiday season. But then, once we got our computer upgrade done, we started meeting with the department directors to go over their operation and maintenance budget. So, the month of February was a short month, but very busy, with meeting with the directors and then with the city manager, meeting with the directors along with me. So, then, on March 13th, we had the City Council workshop, work session, to go over our preliminary budget. And on March 18th, we presented that same information to the citizens at the senior center. And then, on April 10th, we had a special meeting to discuss the budget in which we had more information on positions that we discussed, I would say, quite thoroughly. And a lot of decisions were made at that meeting. On April 15th, the Tentative Budget was filed with the Nevada Department of Taxation. And brings us to tonight. So, the purpose of the city budget is to present a clear picture to residents, council, and staff regarding the city's financial direction. It includes summaries of the revenues, expenditures, and personnel costs. And it provides an overview and summary of all city funds. And we also have the capital improvements, special projects, and other discretionary spending items which are all packed into our information. So, the other purpose of this is to improve the overall financial tracking for the city and provide a tool for heightening management's awareness. And it helps us achieve our prudent financial stewardship. And we started this last year, but we actually, I think, greatly improved these two documents. Actually, this one is from last year, and it's improved. I say 100% improved. There was a lot of additional new work put in here and a lot of really good information. So, anybody who wants to learn about the budget and doesn't want to just have to look at numbers can actually pick up one of these documents. And it has a pretty good background of the Boulder City budget. But the new item this year was this executive summary, which we started last July, and that was tentatively adopted in November. So, this document is pretty new. And it hasn't really changed much from November, but I'll get into that when we go over the PowerPoint information. Since the budget was submitted, there have only been a few minor changes, and basically, it's been four things changed. So, this budget represents the council's direction as approved on the April 10th meeting, and there was a lot of discussion that morning about the personnel positions. There's been some additional expense that came to our knowledge after that meeting involving pool pack, increasing insurance premiums. So, we amended the budget from that April 15th time by 50,000. There was an additional expense of 6,500 added for Community Development Department, and that's to take care of the, some increase in dues. And there was also a decision to delay the utility rate increases for six months. So, now for the numbers part. The general fund revenue expenditure overview. So, the total general fund operating and general fund capital is 35,500,000. And that's broken down in this slide by 34.6 million in revenues and 32.9 million in expenditures, leaving a 1.7 surplus. But because of our capital needs, we're also going to use some fund balance to bring up the amount we're going to contribute to capital of 2.6 million. So, where the general fund money comes from is probably a familiar pie to most folks if they look, if they were here last year or have looked at information from last year. We use a similar type format. Our largest revenues are consolidated tax and leases. They both make up a third of the budget, and then the rest is just smaller pieces. And then, where the general fund money goes, our largest expenditure is for public safety at 12.45 million, and the budget is balanced at 35.5 million for revenues and expenditures. On the utilities, we basically now have five separate budgets, an administrative budget, electricity, water, wastewater, and landfill. We've implemented, we're going to defer the rate increases for six months, and those budgets have been adjusted for that loss of revenue. All budgets are self-sustaining, and electric, water, wastewater, utility, condition assessments, and rate study are some of the big assessments for next year's budget. So, those are pretty big costs. They need to be done in order to get a good handle on what needs to be done to improve the system. On personnel, the final budget includes 11 new classifications and eliminates four classifications. We have a resolution creating a new job class, a new, a resolution creating new job classification titles and position ranges as required by city code. There's 13 new FTEs for a total FTE of 198. The 2019 FTEs were 184.8, and a general salary increase for most part-time, including part-time employees is about 2.375%. The upcoming year's capital improvement plan has projects totaling about 30 million. There's been minimal changes since last November. There's been some shifting of projects and not dollars, so the total is pretty much about the same, but we've moved a few projects around. There is a new project that was added called Bistro Lighting, and the five-year plan will be submitted to the Nevada Department of Taxation along with the budget. Before I turn it over for questions, I just want to briefly talk about the item D, Resolution 6941. That's the amendment to the current year budget, and it's a cleanup, as I mentioned, to miscellaneous adjustments in the current year budget. So, Exhibit A in the packet lists those budget transfers and budget adjustments that we are requesting approval for. This is just a normal annually reoccurring item. And I think in the future, as we get better tools for budgeting and probably do better budgeting, we may have less and less of these adjustments, but we have a few this year. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments, counsel? Mr. McManus?
One of the projects, I think you had mentioned earlier in the year, and you mentioned this evening, a computer upgrade or software upgrade. I believe the accounting system you use is called Munis.
Yes.
And I think you had talked about there being a module available that would allow the public to be able to access the system and view line items or a greater degree of granularity than what doesn't exist now.
Yes, we can get that module. We don't have that one right now, but that is on our plan for the upcoming year. Try to get, once I get all my personnel established, we're going to have someone start working on that. And there are some internal changes have to be done before we can properly reflect that information.
Okay, but that is on your to-do list for the year?
Yes, it is.
All right. In looking over the utility budgets, the electric budget, one of the items missing or that may have been renamed that I did not see was the 69 KV overhead line from the BC Tap into Hemman Way Valley?
That's in this year's budget.
Okay, so that's considered paid for?
No, that'll be, I think there'll be some of that carried over for sure. But this document just has the upcoming year and the next four years. That'll be one of our improvements to this next year. We're going to have a carryover piece.
Okay.
Councilman McManus, yeah, the 69 KV loop was out of the current year we're in right now. The PO has been issued, but none of the money has been spent, so that money does roll over when they start invoicing us.
Okay. And again, I just wanted to make sure, as I say, as I looked through the list there, I didn't see it listed, and that's been considered a critical project for a long period of time. Also, on the electric budget, after listing all of the revenues and expenses, it still appears that we're 1.2 million in the black on that?
I would agree with you.
And that's after the deferment of the rate increase has been calculated?
Yes.
Okay. And that budget includes 6.4 million in capital improvement projects?
Yes.
I know I'm cheating because I actually have the numbers already here, but...
Yep.
And as I look at the electric capital improvement budget going forward, next year was 6.7 million, following year 7.75 million, then dropping down to 5.7 and 5.3. But the revenues, I'm assuming, are projected to be relatively flat over that period of time?
I don't recall right now how, I would think they would be. But I guess part of that will depend on the rate study we do, what's proposed. You know, they could go up, they could go down.
Okay. And again, what I'm getting at is we have over $6 million over the next at least three years projected for capital improvement projects, and even with that, we're still carrying a surplus, and that surplus is, includes our six-month deferment of the rate increase?
Yes.
Okay. The point I'm getting at is we seem to be paying our bills, we seem to be doing the projects that we want to, and we're still accumulating a surplus in that fund.
Yes, but we don't know if it's a surplus because depending on what these studies reveal, we may need a lot more money than we have planned right now in this document.
Right. I'm just saying that if we look at it as it is right now, with the current expenses, the current capital improvement projects, all of that built in, we're still taking in more than what the fund requires to do what we want to do.
Yes.
Okay. The water fund, and I know you're not going to know the answer to this. Excuse me, the wastewater, the, there's a project called the Forest Main from Wastewater Treatment Plan to Reuse Customer, estimated at a cost of $18.5 million. Can we get a description of what that project is for the benefit of those watching at home?
Not really. So, I believe that project was, because it's not funded, but it was put into the capital plan as a, as a future potential project, acknowledging that there may be an opportunity to either upgrade the treatment plant so that there's a potential for providing higher-quality water to some future customers, whoever that might be. They probably wouldn't be any of the golf courses because two of them are on raw water, and one of them we're hoping to put on raw water, so there wouldn't be any reason to put them on the reclaimed water. Right now, there's one customer, essentially one customer, on reclaimed water. It's really going to come down to what happens with our study with the Southern Nevada Water Authority with regards to if we can do something to get return flow credits by treating the water to a higher standard and getting those return flow credits. And then, it remains to be seen how that would be funded. So, I think that's why in the capital plan, it's shown as a project that's not funded. And those rates don't, at this point in time, the current rates and even what we do in the future is going to depend on that study, so...
And I know from the discussions we've had, the Southern Nevada Water Authority is really just recently starting to look at reclaiming the discharge that we have from our treatment plant now as of past six months, I guess?
Even less than that. So, I met with them about, about the time we started the budget back in February, March. So, they're just now collecting data, looking at the different alternatives, and then they'll start getting into more detail. Still going to be fairly high-level to start with, just so we can get our arms around the options. The options would be putting it back in the river on this side of the valley, potentially using Henderson's collection system and treatment system, and getting it back into Lake Mead, or even other potential options of injecting groundwater or treating to a higher level where you can actually, you know, potentially drink it, which is highly unlikely, but something we'll look at cost-wise.
Okay. And again, the reason I bring it up is when we look at these capital improvement projects and within the wastewater division, the total capital improvement projects are 22.3 million, and of that is that 18.5 for a project that we have no clear idea of what specifically it would be used for.
Yes, it remains to be seen.
Okay. Again, I think when we look at these numbers, to get an understanding of what is behind that total is critical for understanding what our rate should look like.
Yes, and when we, we get into the rate study, we'll clearly have those options in mind and getting into better, bigger detail on what those revenue requirements would be based on what the capital improvement plan should be.
All right. Another question on water, there's budgeted, and it's not really within the utility fund, but a million dollars for irrigation replacement and upgrades at the municipal golf course?
Yeah, that's not my project. But Roger, you want to field that one? And then, I'll sit down and hide somewhere.
Thank you. The existing golf course, the existing golf course was built in the 1970s. The front nine, the back nine was built in 1985, basically. So, we have an 18-hole golf course. The system that they put in was the old system. For example, if you had a dry spot on number one, the way it's set up, you'd have to run a line of sprinklers, probably 15, 16 sprinklers on number five, on number one, and number two to get that water spot or the dry spot. The irrigation system is very inefficient. The new system would be a valve and head system, and basically, you can isolate your dry spots. It would save a great deal of water, water cost, and labor cost, and it'd get rid of a lot of waste down there at the Boulder City Golf Course.
Okay, that money's not coming from the golf course funds, right? That's general fund money that's going to that project?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Has there been an estimation on when the payoff of that million dollars would be with the water savings, labor savings, whatever other savings?
Well, it's being looked at right now. We're looking at the possibility of doing it in conjunction with putting raw water on the course as well, which is a lower cost to us as opposed to potable water, and that's being looked at by our new utilities director. And so, we're looking at, you know, the overall idea of reducing costs at the golf course by eliminating a lot of water loss, basically.
Again, the question is, what's the payoff horizon on that? When, we're asking for a million dollars out of the general fund for an improvement at the golf course, so the golf course fund is not supporting it. Is it 20 years, 30 years?
Well, the finance director said it's more like five years.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Sure, did we answer that as best as we can? Yes, go ahead.
I also, my understanding is that on the golf course, because we'll be replacing some turf, there's also reimbursement from the Southern Nevada Water Authority for any turf removal.
That's a possibility, too. Yes, that's a possibility that we're looking into as well. There's a lot of turf on the existing Muni Golf Course that really doesn't come into play, and that can be eliminated. I know the Southern Nevada Water Authority is giving $3 a square foot for, for people to remove their turf, and we're looking at that as well.
That would apply to municipalities also, that credit?
That's correct.
Yes, yes, it does, and for golf courses.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, back to a budget question. The Utility Administration Fund lists 3.4 million in transfers in from the individual utility accounts?
Yes.
And then, there's a transfer out to the general fund of approximately a million dollars?
Yes.
And I don't get that.
And that's for administrative services that the general fund provides to the utility fund, like processing their accounts payable, processing their payroll, providing attorney services, city manager services, all of the administrative services that we provide to the utility funds.
Okay, and, you know, I assume that there was some cost there, but the expenses that you list for that fund, utility administration, central services, billing and collections, are all included in that amount that's being transferred in from the other utilities, so...
Right, so that's allocated according to the size of each utility. They proportionately contribute to all the costs that make up the administrative fund.
Okay, so outside those activities, then, you're saying that there's still another million dollars' worth of work being done by other city employees that is not captured within those expenses?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any specifics on that?
I provided that information in the last budget, but I can, I can definitely, it's a percentage that was calculated during the rate study about five years ago, and it was a time study of the amount of time spent by the general fund departments administering services to the utility funds.
Okay, so more of a percentage estimate rather than...
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to clarify something that I mentioned earlier. I did say all the funds are balanced, and they are, but the water utility fund, if it wasn't getting money transferred in from the voter-approved, so if you look at page 14 in this document, so on page 14, there's transfers in of 1,500,005. So, if those transfers in weren't happening, then this fund would be in a deficit. So, it's relying on the voter-approved funding for the utilities to help supplement this fund, and the wastewater is also in a similar situation. fund, and the wastewater is also in a similar situation.
Okay, even though this year, it looks like there's roughly nine hundred thousand in the black between revenues and expenses on the water utility, again, looking at page fourteen.
But that includes the transfer in.
And the transfer in is...
Is from the voter-approved funding that can be used, but the utilities could not support itself just on its rates and get their capital done if we didn't have money coming in from the voter-approved funds.
And that money comes from the Capital Improvement Fund or the general fund?
Yes, this is to take care of the capital. There's a million five in the capital next year for the water fund.
Okay, but I mean, it comes out of the Capital Improvement Fund, not out of the general fund, but out of the capital improvement?
It comes out of the water utility. We're trying to make these funds support themselves, so the water projects should be supported by the Water Utility Fund, but the Water Utility Fund is not generating enough money to pay those projects. So we are using the voter-approved monies that were approved by the voters to use for utility projects.
Right.
But they've had to use just about all that money.
And what I'm getting at is that voter-approved money that you're referring to is actually lease money that goes into the Capital Improvement Fund and then comes back out?
And land sales.
Okay, if there are land sales.
Right.
Right. Okay, so that would then put that fund, if that money were to go away, then we would be, what, six hundred thousand dollars in the red on that, at least for this current year?
Yes.
And capital projects are at one point five million?
Yes.
Within that fund?
Mm-hmm.
So the water fund itself is responsible for all of the one point five million from the Capital Improvement Fund, the voter-approved money?
We actually, I believe, made the projects fit the funding available, so we don't know what'll happen next year with that. So, you know, depending on, again, these studies and the infrastructure evaluations and assessments, you know, we don't know what the future needs are going to be. So what we've tried to do is tailor what we can do with what the funding we have available. So there is a little bit of restriction as to, you know, what we can do and what we can't do right now.
And that fund, that fund is actually the only debt that Boulder City has right now. We pay two point three million dollars a year in debt out of that particular fund.
Yes.
So if we say that the one point five million then coming out of the Capital Improvement Fund is actually going towards the debt service, is that correct? I mean, we could, since we're moving money around, we could say that that's where that money's going.
I wouldn't classify it that way, but I guess, you know, it's one pot of money, but we could say one of these dollars is going towards that, but that's not really the way it's structured right now.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at is, I think that that money was initially said to the voters that that was going to go towards improvements in our systems, but really, it's just paying off old debt or helping.
No, it's going towards improvements in the system.
Well, it depends on which dollar you pick to do that with, right?
Well, I know the way I, we put this together, it's going towards projects.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Any others? Councilwoman Levitt, Mr. Hare?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, thank you.
I just have one comment to make, Diane. With respect to voters' approval of paying the debt on the raw water line, that was a question presented to the voters in two thousand sixteen that they did approve. So although she's categorizing it as paying for projects, it could also pay for debt.
But the land sale that we hope to have happen at some point around the land around the golf course is earmarked for that? Yes.
Again, it's all which dollar you pick to do it with.
All right, so we do have a public hearing on the tentative budget, correct? So I'll open up the public hearing on the tentative budget. Anyone wishing to speak on the tentative budget? All right, I'll close the public hearing, and can we take all of these at once then? All right, I'm going to go ahead then and move for approval of items, what are they, thirteen, B, C, and D? Is that correct?
I believe we need separate votes on each one of those. They are separate items.
Okay, we can do them separate. I will move for approval of item B, resolution number sixty-nine forty. All in favor? Oh, I need a second, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is item number C. I'll move for approval of item thirteen C, which is the final operating in capital budgets.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries with Mr. McManus dissenting. And then item number D is resolution sixty-nine forty-one. I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. All right. Anything else on that item? All right, so item number fourteen, appointment to the Utility Advisory Committee. Who is introducing that item?
I will, Mayor, thank you. The city council established a Utility Advisory Committee by resolution six-nine-one-seven at its April ninth regular meeting. This committee is comprised of seven members serving two-year terms. In order for terms to be staggered, staff is recommending that three members be appointed to a one-year term and four members be appointed to a two-year term, so they don't all expire at the same time. And so there were interested volunteers, their data sheets were submitted in your packet, and we have several very qualified applicants, so we thank those who have submitted their data sheets. And I think the best way to do it is the, either go for the two-year term first and then the one-year term, but do it separately, appointments by the term length, please. So everyone will get to vote for seven members, but if we do it, the one-year term, everybody votes for three; two-year term, everybody votes for four.
All right, I'm going to go, so first I need to disclose that I have a conflict with Michael Giroux. So to the extent he's nominated, I will have to abstain. He's a client of mine, current client, past client, and on unrelated matters, but in the interest of erring on the side of caution, I will abstain from any vote and deliberation with respect to him. And so I will go ahead and make some nominations, I'll open nominations, and these are really in no particular order of priority, but...
Is this for the one or two-year term, Mayor?
Ah, this is for, we can have a discussion on that once we're nominated. So I will nominate Howard Anala, Keith Bacon, Shane Cunningham, Marty Reel.
Oh, my goodness.
Ned Shamo, Greg Todd, and Eileen Wilkinson. And I'm sure we may have a lot more.
Well, I think we're making this very difficult on the Madam City Clerk as far as keeping a tally sheet on these different individuals.
Okay.
So was that seven nominations?
Sure, I'll nominate them for two-year terms then.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. Howard Anala, Keith Bacon, Shane Cunningham, Marty Reel, Ned Shamo, Greg Todd, Eileen Wilkinson.
We're only looking at four for two-year terms, is that correct?
I have seven names for you, too.
Wait. I'm sorry. I just want to repeat this because that was fast. Anala, Bacon, Cunningham, did you say Carr?
Reel. Marty.
Yeah, I got that, Marty, Reel.
Shamo.
Oh, Shamo, okay, I missed one, okay. All right.
So these are for two-year terms?
Got it.
Which we will need four in the end. Do you have other names, Mr.?
I do, I have seven names.
Okay, are they all different than the ones I named?
Some are different, some are the same.
Okay.
I will say that we have some really excellently qualified candidates. Awesome, awesome resumes. Anala, Shamo, Ree, Todd, Wilkinson, Carr.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the procedure.
Okay, hang on one second, let Mr...
Can you start over and please, like, slow it down?
Sure. Anala, Shamo, Ree, Todd, Wilkinson.
This is a test for you. You're doing pretty well.
Anala.
Got it.
Shamo.
Got it.
Ree. Todd. Wilkinson. Carr. And Cunningham.
Okay, so we added Ree and Carr to what my list. Hey, Mr. Hare, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question about the procedure, what we're doing. Are any of the applicants in the city hall chambers right now?
Yes, and we'll allow them to speak if they would like to.
I'd like to hear at least from them at least in a minute or so, of those that are present, to augment the applicant information that we have, which is very sparse in trying to make a decision for this very important commission. The, it's a difficult decision to make when you have no opportunity to interview or talk with these folks, or, and none of them have communicated directly to the city council through, other than the form that's been sent to the city clerk and then forwarded to the council for consideration. It's a flawed process in my mind, in that we don't give an opportunity for those people, that we don't have a direct working relationship in the past, and as Mr., as the mayor had mentioned, that he had a relationship with Mike Giroux. I have a relationship with Mike Giroux in the past, and then I did some pro bono writing for his column in one of the local magazines. It was, there's no compensation and there's no other business arrangement other than authorship of that article. But in terms of some of the other people who I have no background information on, I'd like to hear from them in terms of what their strong points are, in terms of what their commitment can be, and it's really difficult to do with just soliciting names. And it appears that what would happen is the first people whose names were nominated would have a leg up in terms of being selected when it may not be the case that that order is the appropriate order to select them. In my selection process, I made a matrix of what the skills that they have disclosed in their application, and their commitment to the community, their longevity in the community, and other things that weighted those to come up with my list, and I'm concerned that some of the people may not get a fair shake, because, you know, other people just by happenstance or by official order would be selected for the committee. The other thing is, I believe it's, we're going to go for three applicants for a two-year term, and then...
Four.
Is that right?
I believe four. Four for the two-year term.
Correct.
Four for the...
Two-year.
Four for the two, and then, and then one for the single one, okay?
Three, so there's seven members, so you would have three for the one-year term.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Well, what is, have we come to a procedure?
Well, I'm just doing it...
Other than individually naming these, I know some of these people very well.
Yeah.
And others, I, I'm at a...
Let me ask you a question. Mr. Hare, are you wanting to hear from everyone in the room who's on the list before you make your nominations?
Well, certainly. The difficulty is, is it's a good problem that we have, and that we have a lot of qualified applicants. And so not all the qualified applicants obviously are going to be chosen, some other are not going to be chosen, and that presents a problem to me, because I do want to pick the best ones for the, for this commission especially. It's a brand-new commission, we want to have the best possible people on it for its novice operations and running. So it's almost, I feel that without having the opportunity to have some more input from these applicants, we're doing not only a disservice to some of those folks, but we're also doing a disservice to the city in not best, possibly, having a selection that is the best possible means of selecting these people.
Hey, we can't hear when you do that, please don't. You've already had your chance to speak.
Now, I have my seven, you know, I have my seven, but that means there's a number of people here that, you know, it's different from their seven. It just, to me, it seems to be a clumsy system, which does not, will not lead to the best results for the city and our ratepayers and the people who are customers of our utility. And I want to have the best possible kickoff for this thing.
So do you want, do you want to hear from, do you want to hear from those that are here before you make your nominations, or do you want to make your nominations first?
No, I'd like to hear from those that are here, there, that'll, that's another point that they're interested enough to make sure that they attend the selection process, although that also is not fair, because I don't know whether they were, I was told that, you know, that's going to be a condition. But for me, I would like to have at least an eyeball discussion with some of these folks who I've picked just based on black and white printing, without any other background information.
Okay, well, I will tell you that at least in my case, some of these people have come to me and we've had discussions, and I've always done that in the past with committee members that are proposing to be, door is always open. But is there anybody else that wants to make any nominations before we have the individuals who are here speak, if they would like to speak?
Well, I'd just like to say that it should be the option for the people that are here. It's just public comment, you know, if they want to come up and speak, we shouldn't put them on the spot.
No, they don't have to.
It shouldn't be required, you know, that's not an interview, we don't have questions for them.
But I will give that opportunity, so. Anybody else wanted to make?
No.
Any nominations before we ask that of those in the audience?
Are there nominations on the floor already?
Yes, there are. We have nine, I can read them to you. Howard Anala, Keith Bacon, Shane Cunningham, Marty Reel, Ned Shamo, Greg Todd, Eileen Wilkinson, George Ree, and Mr. Carr, I didn't write down his first name, sorry.
Well, I have seven names as well.
Okay, go ahead.
How do we do this? Should I give you my seven?
Sure.
All right.
These are for the, these are for the two-year, two-year term.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Keith Bacon.
Okay, Anala.
Larry Carr.
Bacon, Carr, go ahead.
Thomas, I can't read my own writing, Thomas Narnau.
Marvin.
I can't, I can't read my own writing. Thomas, a little help from...
Thomas Marvin.
With Walker, you know.
Thomas Marvin.
George Ree.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, George Ree, and Ned Shamo, and Greg Todd are my seven picks, and how you split them up to the...
Okay, so we added one name to the list, and that's Thomas Marvin. Councilwoman Levitt, do you have any additional? do you have any additional? This is for the two-year term.
It dropped out here. I missed that, whatever that was, the list.
And I apologize. Mr. Harhay, you didn't nominate Mr. Girrow, correct? You were just making a disclosure there.
No, I did not. I just disclosed that I had a business relationship, but it was pro bono.
Okay. Mr. McManus.
Um, did Councilwoman Levitt complete her list?
Do you have any additional, Councilwoman Levitt, to nominate for the two-year term?
Is she there?
She may be dropped.
Oh, I think I have it on mute. Did you hear anything I said?
No.
We've been waiting patiently, though.
I was rattling on and on. I'm sorry. What I said is, I've got three lists here, and I'm trying to compare. So it's just kind of confusing. So Councilman McManus can go ahead, and I'll try and see if I can get this organized while he's doing it. Because I also have my list, but I'm trying to see if there's some crossover here. So Councilman McManus, go ahead.
Thank you. One, I know when we got started on this process of getting this committee together, there was concern that we wouldn't have enough qualified people putting in for it. I believe that has been resolved. We have many qualified people for this. I do have a couple of questions. And again, this is no reflection on the people that have put in for it, but in looking over the applications. Mr. Anala, Mr. Porter, is that someone you have any type of professional experience with? I notice he works for the city of Henderson.
Uh, yes, in my past. That should be better. Howard actually worked in the utility department for the city of Henderson during my tenure there. Haven't spoken to Howard in years. Not even sure if he still works there or not, if he's retired, but...
It looks like he's listing it as current employment.
But yes, Howard and I do have a working, a past working relationship.
Okay. Thank you. I noted that Keith Bacon appears to be currently employed by Southwest Gas. That's not one of the utilities that Boulder City has within its municipal control. But again, I'm concerned about having people that are currently employed for any type of utility. Shane Cunningham, I believe up until the last 30 days, was an employee of Boulder City within the Public Works Department. Again, this is no reflection on Mr. Cunningham. I had an opportunity to speak with him a couple of times. He seemed like a very professional individual. But I'm just wondering if that's enough separation from employment with the city to be then looking at serving on a committee that may be making adverse recommendations for some of the actions that the city is undertaking. Ned Shamo, again, someone I've known for a long time, was our city electrical administrator for some 30-odd years. Again, I think that is great to have experience in these positions, but maybe that's a little too close of a tie, having been in charge of the system for that many years. While it gives him a lot of experience, I think we need some new eyes on this. So those are some of the folks that, again, they appear to be very well qualified for this. I just had some reservations as far as connections that they may have with the city and whether we can look outside that and get a fresh set of eyes on this. The names that I have are Larry Carl, Greg Todd, Martin Reel, Eileen Wilkinson, George Ree, Thomas Marvin, and James Houts.
Okay, it looks like we added James Houts to the list, then.
What was your first one, Councilmember McManus?
Larry Carl.
Carr?
Carr, excuse me.
Okay, got it.
Councilwoman Levitt, shall we, shall we add all the remaining names to the list?
Am I on now?
You're on.
Okay. Okay, Howard, Bacon, Carr, Marvin, Ree, Shamo, and Todd.
Two, three. I missed one.
You said, who was before Todd? Sorry?
Shamo.
I got that.
So I hear you said, Anala Bacon.
Carr.
Carr, Marvin, Shamo.
Ree.
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 And Todd, correct?
Shamo and Todd, yeah.
Okay. So for the two-year terms, two-year terms, I have Anala Bacon Cunningham, Reel, Shamo, Todd Wilkinson, Ree, Carr, Marvin, and Houts. Does that match your list?
Well, I didn't do it like that, but yeah, I'm sure it does. I'm confident I have everyone's marked. But I don't know how you want to do it. But I think the best, the easiest way, just because I made a chart, is if you vote, if everyone votes for four on the two-year term, because we're placing four members. And so everyone would, when we read off these nominations, everyone would pick four for the two-year term.
Okay, so we're gonna let people speak first unless there's any further discussion from council. All right, there's, among those candidates that are on this list, is there anyone wishing to speak for yourself? We'll give you a minute, minute and a half to stand up. Greg?
Of the people on that list, who's in the room?
Well, Mr. Todd's about to speak to us.
Good evening, City Council and members of the city of Boulder City. My name is Greg Todd. I've been a resident of Boulder City for 12 years. During that 12 years, I have spent 26 years working for the L.A. Department of Water and Power, electrical foreman and supervisor, along with assisting in construction, design, and installation of anything from a million volts DC down to 120-volt wall outlet. I've worked on transmission lines, subtransmission, power stations, transformers, just about anything to do with electricity. That has been my lifeblood. I retired three and a half years ago from L.A. Water and Power and decided this to be my home. I feel that I can give a lot of experience and a lot of help in the system and in the distribution of Boulder City's electric, and also a strong background in water and anything to do with pipe. So that's basically the simplest way I can do it. If any other references or credentials or anything need to be given, I can supply them on demand. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Others of the candidates wishing to speak. Mr. Ree.
Yeah, George Ree, so my name is George Ree. I wasn't expecting to speak, but since I was kind of requested to speak, I'm happy to do that. I'm a scientist. That's my training. I don't have experience in utilities. But I'm very interested in renewable energy and climate change. I teach classes on those subjects. For physics majors and non-science majors at UNLV, I recently published a paper on water supply from tree rings and statistics which impacts the flows of the Colorado River from which we derive our water. And I was invited by Mr. Harhay to, when the ad hoc utility committee was set up, to join it. And I've attended the meetings fairly regularly. So I think I can bring, if nothing else, an original voice to these issues from someone who's not a professional on these things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reel.
Good evening, council. I wasn't expecting to speak either, but I, my background is accounting, and I retired as the controller for Titanium Metals Corporation in Henderson. And during several years in the 90s, I can't remember, four or five, Ti-Met has an allocation of water and power from the dam, which they've had since the 70s. And I did sit on the state of Nevada Division of Colorado River Commission for about five years. So I have a little bit of experience there. We were a huge consumer of both water and power. And like I said, my, my experience is in accounting, and I was their controller. So I think that the city of Boulder City is, is really in the business of the utilities. And it's really important that we have good understanding of the accounting and costs of the system. And that's about it. Thank you.
I missed your name at the beginning.
It's Marty Reel. Martin Reel on your packet.
Marvin Reel. Okay, Marty Reel.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Eileen Wilkinson. I moved here about three years ago, retired from the city of Lincoln City in Oregon. And I was responsible for the utility building, water and sewer. And so I'm very familiar with that aspect of utilities and also financial budgets, municipal budgets. And I care about this city, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that I missed wishing to speak? Okay.
Mayor, we could do it an easier way. So there are, there's one person that had all five council members nominate him. So if you didn't want to vote on it, we could just appoint him to the two-year term. That's Mr. Todd. And then we have, one, two, three. We have four people that received four nominations. And so those four could automatically be appointed. We just have to determine who would go to the one-year term. And then we have one, two, three people that received three votes, and the rest, it was two or one. So we could just take the top nominees, if you wanted to do it that way.
Okay. Do we have any appetite for doing it that way? Are we okay with that?
Just out of curiosity, who are the people? I thought it might be a fair question, but maybe not.
So Mr. Todd has all five council members nominated Mr. Todd. Then Howard Anala had four nominations. Larry Carr had four. George Ree had four. Ned Shamo, four. Keith Bacon had three. Thomas Marvin had three. Eileen Wilkinson had three. So that's eight.
And we need seven.
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Luke, can you tell me who you said after Bacon?
Yes. Mr. Carr, Larry Carr, had four nominations.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any discussion on that proposal? We would have to obviously eliminate, well, of the two-year term, we have to select four. So we have a five and three, four, or four for yours.
I have a question, I have another question. For Ned Shamo, how many years has he been retired from Boulder City? I just want, in reference to the objection that Mr. McManus had.
At least 10, because I know Rory worked here 10 years. So he's been retired a minimum of 10 years.
All right. That's why I thought he was pretty well disconnected.
I think that's about right. I think, yeah, I think he told me he was around in about 2008. So I think it's a little over 10 years.
I think now, now that we have a list of names, I do think we need to go back through these names rather than going on a prior vote. Now that we have all the names out there, I think we need to go back through that, whether we want to do it in the groupings.
All right. Let's see. There's no perfectly fair way to do this. So I'm just gonna do it alphabetical. Is everybody ready to pick your top four for?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I think it's much better for the process if we vote on each individual rather than doing a slate. Plus, we have a difference to make between those who are being elected to two-year terms and those being elected to one-year terms.
Correct. So we'll go through them one by one. I just want to make sure everybody's ready to pick your four for the two-year term. And we'll go one at a time. Are you ready for that? We're gonna do two-year term first. All right. So I'm gonna do this alphabetically. Sorry that we're favoring those who have...
I'm not sure that that works out, though. If we're going to vote on these, I think, again, by going in the groupings that the city clerk has already put forward, that might be a better way to do this than alphabetically, but...
Okay. I thought you were suggesting otherwise, but I'm happy to do it that way. So are we good with going with Mr. Todd first and then to those that got four nominations? All right, that's what we'll do then. So for the two-year term, all those in favor of Mr. Greg Todd?
Aye.
Well, I, I...
Shouldn't we consider?
What was the question?
Mr. Todd for the four-year term, though?
There's no four-year term, but shouldn't Mr. Todd, well, it's okay. You do.
Okay. So...
I think Mr. Harhay has a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, what was the vote on?
This is for, so...
Connection has been.
Yeah. So this is gonna be for those four members that we're appointing to two-year terms. And we're gonna go through them one by one. So make sure you know which four you're gonna vote for. That's what I was asking, to make sure you're ready to do that. Because we're gonna go through all of these 11 or 12 names we have here, one by one.
Vote for four.
And you get, you're gonna...
I thought we were just going through the top vote getters. We're going through all of these ten.
Okay. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go through name by name. And we're gonna pick, we get, you get four votes. So pick the four that you want. If I name a name and you don't want to vote for that person, it's not one of your top four for the two-year term, then don't vote yes. Just be silent on that one. Okay? All right. So I'm gonna go through in the order of those who received the most nominations. We'll do the five first, which is Mr. Greg Todd. So again, the vote is for Mr. Greg Todd to the two-year term. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Five votes for Mr. Todd to, he's appointed to the two-year term.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going through the, those that were given four nominations. Mr. Howard Anala, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So that's three, I believe. And that's, we didn't hear from?
Yeah.
Mr. Schuman or Mr. McManus?
I said, I voted yes.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So that's four, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody voted for Mr. Anala except Mr. McManus, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's four votes. And then Mr. Ned Shamo, all in favor of Mr. Ned Shamo?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's four, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Four votes. Okay, Mr. George Ree, all in favor?
Aye. Well, didn't we get our three two-year term?
We need four.
Four.
Oh.
Okay, let's do that vote again. Mr. George Ree, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We have two?
I have three. I had Haray, McManus, and Schuman for Mr. Re.
Okay. Mr. Haray, did you vote for Mr. Re?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three for Mr. Re. Correct?
Correct.
I can go, I, I, I vote aye on him as well.
All right. Then I will too. So then we'll have our top four. Congratulations to Mr. Anala, Mr. Shamo, Mr. Todd, and Mr. Re, two-year terms. All right. Now the one-year terms. Do we have any additional nominations besides those already nominated?
Well, again, I believe out of the group that had previously received four votes, you never asked about Mr. Carr.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, Mr. Carr, all in favor of Mr. Carr?
Aye.
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 Okay, we have... All right. So count up the number of votes you have there for each one. Make sure we have a total of 20 votes.
Five, ten, fifteen, four. I have 23 votes.
Okay.
Because Greg Todd was unanimous. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Twenty-two, five, 10, 14, 22 votes. Greg Todd...
We need a secret ballot poll.
And George Re, each had five. Ned Shamo had four. Howard Anala had four.
So Greg Todd had five. Who had three? Anybody?
Well, at first, George Re had three, I think, and then two people put their vote in.
Okay, so we can't...
Did everyone vote for four? Somebody voted more than four times.
Because if you don't vote, it doesn't count. So, no, you're not going to be able to do it that way.
So...
Well, still, our, okay. So it should be less than 20 or less votes, not 23.
So I'm telling you who voted more than once. I only have three for McManus.
Here's what we're gonna do.
Five for Levitt and five for Haray.
Mr. Schuman, who did you vote for?
I think I went Anala.
Schuman, I have five for you. Mr. Schuman, I have five for you too.
Hang on. How many, who did you vote for, Mr. Schuman?
You wanna know my four?
Yes, I want your four.
Anala, Shamo, Todd, and Re.
Okay, you got that?
Yes.
You're the matrices person.
I repeat it.
Okay, so Mr. Schuman voted for?
Anala, Shamo, Todd, and Re.
Anala, Shamo, Todd, and Re.
That's his top four, I have that. Peggy, I need Peggy's top four.
Okay. Miss Peggy Levitt?
I have, I'm sorry, were you talking to me?
Yes, please. Your top four.
Okay, I have, I have Todd, Anala, Shamo, and Re.
Todd, Anala, Shamo, and Re.
That's okay, no one else did.
And now I need, Mr. Councilmember Haray, your top four, please.
So Mr. Haray, we are trying to recount the votes on the four that will be appointed to the two-year terms. So who, what are your, who are your four?
Well, I did not get four the last time.
Mr. Haray, Councilmember Haray, I have you for five. You had Anala...
You guys picked a great meeting to be absent from.
Carr, Re, Shamo, and Todd. So I have one extra vote for you. I need four, please.
I'm going to... Carr, Re, Shamo, and Todd I've got for four. It's gonna be four.
Carr, Re, Shamo, Todd, okay.
Now you need mine?
I have yours as Anala, Re, Shamo, and Todd. Was that correct?
That is how I voted, that's correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So now we have 20 votes. Todd, Shamo, and Re are in. But I have two for Carr and three for Anala. So Anala's in for the two-year term. Anala, Re, Shamo, Todd for the two-year term.
Should we just leave it at four members? Okay, we're on to the one-year term. Can you hear me okay?
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, in the, in the spirit of expediting this, I think the city clerk has... Councilman Haray, would it be possible for you to mute your phone, please?
And stop rapping, too?
The connection here is terrible, going in and out. So sometimes it's a complete...
It's noticeable at this end as well.
So we do have, we do have a tie again. So we have four people with three votes. And so we need to eliminate one person.
Well, we didn't vote on anybody.
What I would like to do is have each of us present our next three then, see how that total comes out.
You didn't, you didn't want to vote for the next vote-getters with the remainder, Bacon, Carr, Marvin, and Wilkinson?
Well, we only have three left, but we have some names that are not on that list that some of us may prefer.
So you want to re-nominate the people?
Well, I want to name our next...
Hang on, Mr. Haray, hang on, because we can't, I know you can't hear, but we got a lot of talking going on. Okay, Mr. McManus?
I, I think by nominating the next three, we can come up with, each of us nominates our next three, we can then come up with a list for the one-year terms and work from there.
So we've already got nominations on the floor.
The problem is that if we keep going this way, there are people that are being eliminated that may be considered by others but didn't receive enough votes earlier. So again, I don't think we should just be eliminating people because some people have been selected. That may prompt a council member to then select someone else.
Okay. Do we have any additional nominations besides those that are already on the list? Let's start there.
I had James Houts.
He's on the list. So we have remaining on the list, Keith Bacon, Shane Cunningham, Marty Reel, Eileen Wilkinson, Larry Carr, Thomas Marvin, James Houts. Anybody else that you want to add to that list? Okay. So I'm hearing none. So...
I've got a question.
Absolutely.
For consideration in this process. Is there any time of the essence requirement that we make this decision tonight?
Yeah.
Why don't we have, why don't we get, we do?
We can wait till 12:01 PM if you want us to, but we're here tonight to do it. So let's do it.
Well, my, my thing is if they were all, if the front-runners, we already made a selection from which we could make a second selection. But then so confusing is all's up in the air as to who took notes, or how many people got this vote, or how many people got that vote.
That's why I like Mr. McManus's idea. Let's just, let's just say our top three, then we won't be confused about it. So I'm gonna name the people that are still on the list. And I want you to either write them down or have them in your head so you know, and then you're gonna get to vote for three. So the people on the, people still on the list are Keith Bacon, Shane Cunningham, Marty Reel, Eileen Wilkinson, Larry Carr, Thomas Marvin, James Houts. You need me to repeat any?
Okay, I would, my three would be Keith Bacon, Larry Carr, and Thomas Marvin.
Thomas Marvin? All right.
Who do you want next?
Whoever wants to name their top three.
I have my three.
All right.
Wilkinson, Carr, and Cunningham. Wilkinson, Carr, and Cunningham.
Councilmember Levitt?
My top are Carr, Bacon, and Marvin.
Mr. Councilmember McManus?
Carr, Wilkinson, Reel.
And Mayor Woodbury?
I'm gonna go with Bacon, Cunningham, and Wilkinson. I'm sure we made a couple.
Okay, Mr. Carr has four. Bacon has three. Cunningham, two. Marvin, two. Oh, no. Wilkinson, three. Oh, that does it. So that would be Keith Bacon, Larry Carr, and Eileen Wilkinson for the one-year term.
So we should have had a total of 15 votes, right? Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Yes, I have 15.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, come on, it wasn't that bad. You want to be on the camera doing that?
All right. Do you want me to repeat the two and one year so everyone's clear?
I'd like you to repeat all seven, please.
Yes. Okay. Just for clarification, the two-year terms go to Howard Anala, George Re, Ned Shamo, Greg Todd. The one-year terms are Keith Bacon, Larry Carr, and Eileen Wilkinson.
Congratulations, everybody, that made the top seven. And thank you to all of you for being willing to step up. Great problem to have with lots of qualified candidates. Makes it a little complicated to choose, but it's a great thing to have people willing to serve on our committees. And this is a long-awaited committee, one that we don't usually, on my eight years, I don't recall having to constitute a whole committee, so that's a good thing. And we're anxious to see how you can help us. I know that there'll be a learning curve on both sides of the table, both for the committee members as well as city staff and council. And just thank you for participating and being willing to serve. And those of you that didn't make it, one year from now, we'll be selecting three new spots, I guess. And you can still participate by just being great citizens and going to those meetings and helping out. Okay. We are on to then item number 15.
Can I have a comment?
Yes. Go ahead.
I just want to comment. First, it's an embarrassment, but it's because of embarrassment of riches in terms of this, the interest in those positions. And I would like to suggest that sometime the staff and council get together so that we have a more structured format if we're ever put in this position again, as well as to perhaps look at all of the requirements that we would like to have put on that volunteer form. I can think of a number that make it sadly lacking in some of the areas. So I would like to just throw that out for an idea for council and the staff to work together on this process. Let me get a little more streamlined. That's my two cents. Thanks.
All right. Perfect. And we'll try to have everybody here next time we do a full committee selection. Okay. So city clerk's annual report. Madam city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna briefly go over some activities and some projects that have been accomplished in the city clerk's office for the past year. This is by no means, it does not encompass everything we do, but just some items regarding records, elections, passports, requests, items like that. So just for the public's knowledge, our office only consists of four people total. There's three full-time employees and we do have a part-time employee, office assistant. Her name is Carolyn and she's a great benefit to our office. The staffing levels in the city clerk's office have not increased in 20 years. Although the part-time position was added in 2012, it was a revenue-neutral position because we used to contract out our microfilming services. But as that technology became obsolete, we added a person to go ahead and scan our records and digitize some of our permanent records at zero cost to the city. It's more cost-effective to have a person in-house, and that way we can maintain control of our records as well. Oops. So we'll start off with elections. Some of the big changes in that area happened last year at the council's request. When the legislature changed the, our city charter in 2011, it gave us the option to move our elections to even-numbered years. Several presentations were provided to the council. And in 2018, our office drafted an ordinance at the council's request to go ahead and move forward with that. So that was really because the Clark County Election Department had done an audit in 2015 and discovered they were underbilling all the municipalities. And as you know, because I've been sending updates when I receive very, very large bills from the county, they have, they charge us for every Post-it note, every pen, and so the costs have dramatically increased to conduct our own elections. So we did, we are in the process of moving our elections to even-numbered years. And I've also, with the other city clerks involved in the Nevada Municipal Clerks Association, but those in southern Nevada, we worked together to come up with a process that when the Clark County Election Department purchased new equipment, we asked if they could be pre-programmed to allow voters in municipal elections to vote anywhere in the valley that conducted early voting, just like vote centers are conducted. So you can vote any place that has voting. And so just to give you an idea of how that worked this past primary election, voters outside of the city during our early voting period, this does not include mail ballot, 147 people voted outside of City Hall. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but it was 4.71% of our total turnout. And then you think when, you know, Henderson and Vegas have an 8% turnout total, that's pretty significant. Most of those voters did go to the Galleria Mall. So 71 out of the 147 voted at the Galleria Mall. So I think that number will increase as people become more aware. Also, our office worked directly with the Secretary of State to amend AB 50 during this legislative session to exempt Boulder City. We saw the writing on the wall, knowing that there is a big push to move to even years. And so we were already in that process and they were trying to change it, which would have disrupted our election, creating unequal terms for our council members. So I provided testimony for that bill. And I worked directly with Wayne Carlson at the Secretary of State's office, sent him our ordinance, all of the staff reports in minutes, so he could write an exemption because that bill was... so he could write an exemption, because that bill was sponsored by the Secretary of State. One of the, it's not the most exciting topic, but one of the biggest responsibilities of the City Clerk's office, of course, is records, and so, a big project that was completed last year was, we worked with the Police Department, and all of our permanent records used to be in microfilm, well, there's, it's becoming obsolete, we can't even maintain our microfilm machine anymore. So, we, um, converting that microfilm is outrageously expensive. Most municipalities used to send it to the state, but when I checked into that, the cost was approximately $60,000, and that would have required us to ship our microfilm rolls up to the state, and I wasn't comfortable with that, so we obtained some quotes from private vendors, and it ended up that we contracted a company to come out and bring a huge machine that we put in a room that had limited access, only our office staff and PD had access to that, and we converted all the rolls. So, we can, uh, and that was at half of the cost, so it was about $28,000. In addition to the significant cost savings, it allowed us to retain custody and control of all our microfilm. But just to give you an idea of the scope of the project, our portion, the City Clerk's portion of the microfilm conversion was the digitization of over 3.2 million images. So, all of the microfilm's been converted, but now Tina is going in and editing it and making sure it's, it's readable, and so, um, all of the records, it's a very large process, because whether the records were permanent or not, back in the day, they just microfilmed everything, so we've converted all those images, but now Tina has to go through and determine, are these even permanent records, should I delete them, do I need to enhance them, but to make them accessible and readable for the public. This is going to take years. So, but by converting these images, it allows for disaster recovery, searches, and destruction in the proper manner for any records that are past their retention period. Also, Carolyn is working on digitizing all of the agenda packets from the beginning of the city's history, and all of the exhibits for the agenda packets, just because we didn't have the technology previously to do that, and in order to see an exhibit, so if it referred to an exhibit on notes, you'd have to physically pull that file, they're all digitized right now. So, very, very large project completed. Just to give you an idea of records requests, the majority of our records are available online in our public repository, and we've tried to organize those records by how the public requests them, to make it easier. So, for example, if we get a lot of requests for solar lease agreements, we've created a folder, they're, they're under ordinances, they're under agenda packets, but we've created a special folder, so they're in there a couple of times, just to make it easier to search. But we can receive a public records request by, um, we have an automated system through Laserfish, we have an email system through the website, people can call us, they can email us, they can give us a Post-it note, they can make a verbal request. Last year, we had 288 requests. Our average response time is four days, and that is trackable on our Laserfish system, so one of the things we try to do is encourage people to go through that system, because it tracks where it's at, 'cause I can assign it to a different department, and then it has a calendar on there and tells us exactly what the duration is. So, the Nevada average is thirty days. The other large project, um, that we worked on was the recodification of our entire city code. The last total recodification was in 1995, and we went with a company that's very reputable in Nevada, Henderson uses it, eleven cities in Nevada, Henderson, Vegas, North Las Vegas, we talked to all of those entities, they had nothing but great things to say about this company, and just in the past nine months that we've worked with them, they're very responsive, very knowledgeable, they're on time, um, so, so far, so good. The process will take twelve to eighteen months total. So right now, all of the ordinances have been sent to them, they had their, um, briefing with the city attorney a couple of months ago, they have notified us that they've prepared the legal briefs, they'll be sending them to us, we should have them this week or next week at the end of May. When we receive, uh, those briefs, we will have thirty days to respond to any, and everybody's responsible for their own chapter, but we'll all get together as staff, look that over, discuss it, and then provide our input within thirty days, and they'll, it'll go back, and then we'll come back to you as a council, and you'll adopt the whole code. I won't go through all of the features, but it's very, very exciting. It has internal references on our code, so if there's something in the NRS that applies, it will have that cited, it can be converted into, you know, like, over a hundred languages. It's, it will be very efficient for staff, because now, you cannot pull a, a document out of our code and revise it and submit it again, you're kind of, you can read it, but you're starting from scratch, so this will allow people to work in it, edit it, and resubmit. There's a notification system that if, let's say, for example, developers or builders wanna know anytime Title XI is updated, you can sign up and receive alerts for that. You can share certain portions with, on social media, it's just, you know, it brings us into the 21st century. We also offer passport services to the public. Um, last year, we, we completed 285 passports and seventy-three renewals. We had, we were forced to move to an appointment system back in 2017, because we became inundated with passport requests, to the point where we'd walk in in the morning and people would be lined up down the hall. So, it's, um, slowed down a bit, but if we, it could be probably a full-time job for somebody. Um, we have audits regarding this process every year, our audit was conducted in March, and they evaluate areas such as procedures, information security, supplies, training, and no deficiencies were noted. And this was the summary of the audit, that, um, staff demonstrated a thorough knowledge of the process, uh, that, well, they just, and when I say "they," because I'm taking no credit for this, all the credit goes to Tammy, Tina, and Carolyn, I do do them, but it's not as often as they do, so, kudos to those three, um, they really provide a great service to our community, and I consistently get letters and feedback from the public about what great customer service they offer. So moving forward, once the legislative session is over and the election's over, and if Al, you know, his hair's always on fire, so we're always going, 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 but next year, um, our office will be working on digitizing all of the permanent records. We still have some large maps that we need to digitize, and we have a lot of historical files that we need to digitize. We also work with the other departments to, um, identify what their permanent records are, so we can get those in as well, because digitizing isn't just for retrieval or research, it is for disaster recovery, so if anything ever happened, we would, we would still have access to all of the city's records. We're also going to, um, consider changing our early voting site. I know that the community is well-aware that early voting is in the council chambers, but over the last several years, it's become problematic for our seniors. A lot of them don't know that they can park in the back and walk down the ramp, and there's been some difficulties getting up the stairs. Last year, or during the primary, I had to, I moved a lady's car, because she parked out front and then tried to come up the hill, um, so I think we need to look at, um, another site for early voting to make it more accessible. We're also, I'm gonna try to automate the boards and commissions process, and, um, standardized training for committees and commissions. And with that, that's, that about wraps it up, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments, Council? Mr. McManus?
Uh, with the, uh, updating of the code, um, it sounds like you're roughly in a two-year process for that?
Twelve to eighteen months, yes.
Okay. Are they going to show any changes that occur, or changes from what we currently have?
They'll provide, I know they'll provide a summary, but as far as, like, red lines, like, when we amend the code, I don't, that's not, it's my understanding, that's not how it's gonna come to us, I'll have more information when we get those proofs, but when you do a recodification, um, it doesn't show that level of detail usually, but I can find out.
And, uh, your plan then, as far as having council review the changes? Standard five-day packet?
Well, we'll get it to you as soon as, as possible, and get it to you as early as possible.
For voting on, or?
Yes, it, you'll adopt it as an ordinance, so it will take two readings.
Okay, so we'll have
Four weeks.
Two and a half weeks to look at it, then? Okay, that may not be enough time, but...
It can take all the time you need.
Okay. And when that is complete, is it going to be searchable, so that key word phrases can be entered, and?
Yes, the search feature is a huge improvement from our current code.
Yeah, because it, our current is just unworkable.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a failure, I mean, there's no other word for it, it's a failure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we'll move to item number sixteen, City Manager's report.
Mayor and Council, on both reports, these are routine in nature, all the transactions that are contained this month, and no further, uh, items to report on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we are on to our final public comment period, anyone wishing to speak?
I'm Ray Turner, and, uh, I would like to read for the council from a letter that was sent to council by the Boulder City Animal Hospital in November of 2011. Dear Councilmember, I am writing this letter in response to events surrounding the euthanasia of Bo Hans by Animal Control Officer Mary Jo Frazier. As you are aware, on October 25th of this year, Bo, a family pet, was found by Boulder City Police Department in what appeared to be an injured state. Animal Control Officer Mary Jo Frazier was called and picked up Bo from the police station at approximately 6:30 PM, and drove him to the animal control facility, where she later euthanized him, in violation of a city ordinance requiring her to seek veterinary attention. While transporting what was considered to be an injured animal, Ms. Frazier avoided seeking veterinary attention from our office, which was open until 7:00 PM that evening, and was much closer to the police station than the animal control facility. To make matters worse, we had just renegotiated a new agreement with the city at the beginning of the year, in which Ms. Frazier was involved in, and therefore, clearly understood that we have an agreement with the city. It is also important that I talk about several issues that you may not be aware of. I have had an agreement since 1986 with the city of Boulder City to take care of injured or ill animals while under the city's care at reduced rates. Often, the city is able to collect the cost of these fees from the owner of the pet once they are found. It became apparent to me and my colleagues that during Mrs. Frazier's tenure, that the care of injured and ill animals by our hospital for the city had greatly declined. In the fall of 2010, I approached the city manager, Vicky Mays, on this matter, showing through our records that animal control had not sought the care of a single injured or ill animal from us in over twelve months. This was unusual, in that animal control has a dozen-plus animals under their supervision at any given time. It is important to note that since our revised agreement, animal control has requested services from our hospital twice. A special procedure for rabies testing on a dead coyote, the other incident involving a two-year-old declawed, male, neutered cat that was brought in by the Park Service full of cactus quills. In this case, we immediately contacted animal control to gain permission to anesthetize the cat and remove the cactus quills, along with treating him to prevent infection and pain management. The animal control officer would not give permission to do this. The animal control officer asked if she could just take the cat in its current condition and leave it in a cage at animal control for several days. The doctor on duty stated to the officer
Mr. Turner, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
That it would be inhumane and cruel to do so. Even then, the animal control officer wouldn't approve any treatments. In conclusion, it is my opinion that the situation surrounding Bo Hans's euthanasia was not an isolated incident. Ms. Frazier's deliberate violation of city ordinance and not seeking veterinary care, along with the clear history and lack of care of injured or ill animals during Ms. Frazier's tenure as head of animal control, needs further investigation by this council. If you have any further questions, please feel free to contact me. Nobody on the council contacted the vet.
Mr. Turner. And? Mr. Turner.
And not only that, two of those council members are still with us today, one is the mayor, and one is Peggy Levitt. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in final public comment? Yes, please.
I'm Matt Reagan, I, I was appointed to the Airport Advisory Committee, and we had our first meeting on May 7th that I was participated in. I was appointed also, or I selected into, as the chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee. Now, why I'm here today is, is I was speaking with a friend of mine yesterday, and as we're talking, he was on several committees as well, and here in Boulder City, and we're saying, okay, so we pass a resolution, or we vote on something, where does it go? Where is the information? And we were wondering, do you all ever get this information? And so I thought, well, what better way for, to actually inform, as I guess that's what we're supposed to do on these committees, is to inform the council, is to come up here and speak today. And so we did have a meeting, and the, the meeting was actually very productive. I, I was actually pleasantly surprised, 'cause that's certainly why I'm volunteering. We met with, um, the Kurt Goodfellow, who is the vice chairman, and myself, we met with, um, uh, city staff and also, at the airport city staff, and the, the group that they'd hired is the Aeroplex, they're the consultants, um, I have their names, but I don't know if that's all that important, but the Aeroplex Consulting Group. It was actually such a great idea to hire these folks, because we actually made, like, some great progress as far as negotiating the, these leases that are coming up in these, I think there's twenty-some, um, and, and it looks very promising. Uh, some other things that came about in the meeting were, uh, were suggestions on, how do corporations and get representation on these, on, let's say, the Airport Advisory Committee and other committees, because a lot of these corporations do not have any workers that actually live in Boulder City, and so I believe it's either a charter issue, or, um, just fact that they don't, that they don't have any, uh, employees that live here, that can actually volunteer for these committees. And so, for instance, in the Boulder City, at the airport, the, they're underrepresented as far as the corporations are, so we really have, or the hangar owners and the citizens are actually overrepresented, and so, I actually agree with these folks, is that, um, for instance, Papillon, Scenic, uh, the other helicopter places and the businesses, really do not have anybody sitting on the Airport Advisory Committee. Now, I don't know how that could be fixed, and if this is a charter issue, or what it would take, but it seems something that, uh, if there is a way to get, maybe encouraging, or whatever way we can get these folks to have some sort of, um, ability to be able to have somebody sit on these, uh, these committees, it'd be a good idea. somebody sit on these, these committees, it'd be a good idea. Other than that, I, I appreciate being on the, the committee and hope to at least advise in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you all tonight? Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. It was a rough meeting, so I feel sorry for you guys up there. I think we can all agree that the former police administrator, who was not qualified to be chief of police, Bill Conker, was responsible with Mary Jo Frazier for those actions that took place at the animal shelter where over 1,300 animals were murdered during that time period. I'm a little confused why the council received that letter four years before any action took place with Mary Jo Frazier, took the actions of a Boulder City police detective and a very brave employee of the animal shelter that came forward, exposed all that, that happened. But moving on to scary topics. Recently, there was an ad in the Boulder City Rag, I'm sorry, Boulder City Review, that had a large ad in here depicting a mobile home park here in Boulder City. And it called it "The Residents' Sleazy Drug Dealer Infested Mobile Home Park on Nevada Way." I just want to point out to all the voters, this is not a picture of any mobile home slash trailer park, whatever you want to call it, in Boulder City whatsoever. Doesn't exist. This picture is actually from Arizona. Picture was taken last year at a mobile home park. And the story was actually about rehabilitating the mobile homes to bring them up to code. Had nothing to do with drug dealing. That gentleman that's accused of being a drug dealer in this photo, there's no charges against that young man. He's not a drug dealer. So, I was kind of shocked that this was actually in the paper. The actual person that owns that photo was notified and there is a cease and desist order that's on its way. So, I don't know who's responsible for it, but they should be receiving that order shortly. And I just want to make sure that for the voters that are in these mobile home communities, I want to point out that this could happen to your community, possibly, where a developer wants to come in, build some condos, take it over, eminent, domain it, which I've heard passed around city council quite often. So, for the voters out there, you don't have to be ashamed that you're in a mobile home community. A lot of disabled veterans are there, elderly people, actually people that came here and founded this town lived in tents. Nobody questioned their loyalty to the city. Nobody, well, the city wasn't informed then, but they didn't question them why they were there. They were just here to work hard, build a life for themselves. And that's exactly what these folks were doing in these mobile home communities. So, I was really shocked that someone would put this in a paper and an ad when it had nothing to do with Boulder City whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I was working at the animal hospital when that letter was written. I helped remove the cat, the cactus quills from that cat. It had, it had to have had an owner at some point. It was neutered, it was declawed. Those are not features that you find on a stray cat. It unfortunately got out. It, it was no secret that what was going on, at least to us, we saw it routinely, the, the lack of care. And, you know, obviously, all this getting brought back up, you know, a rush of emotions. It, it's, it's so unfortunate. It had a chilling effect. Like I said, I knew how passionately Dr. Stanton was pursuing this issue because I saw it firsthand, you know? He, he's a very passionate person, especially when it comes to these animals. And it had a chilling effect because I was there, I was maybe 25 years old at the time, and this is how I saw the city responding to, to these allegations, something that I witnessed myself. And it made me say, well, if they're not even going to talk to a respected veterinarian here in our community that has been here for that many years, why would they listen to somebody like me, just an assistant? Why would they listen to anybody else? Why would they listen to the victims whose animals were unfairly euthanized? We heard from these people regularly who said, "They just got my cat the other day and it's already dead." You know, this was not isolated. As he pointed out, there were a number of warning signs and yet she was allowed to continue working there for a number of years because it was ignored. And that is very unfortunate. I am glad that we are where we are with this animal shelter that we have now, with Anne's leadership, her staff, and a lot of community support. That animal shelter is, is, is great. But we can't forget just, just how ugly these things really were. And I was not intending to speak on this issue at all tonight, but, but hearing that letter, I was there, I remember that letter being written. It's upsetting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we'll close our public comment period and move to city council reports. Anybody online have a city council report? Mr. Hari? We might have lost them. Mr. McManus?
I just wanted to make note, Saturday evening was the BC's Got Talent, put on by the Boulder City History and Arts. Again, several hundred people there, great time for everybody. And it's great to see that type of participation in the community, especially for events like that. I believe there were about 30 entrants for it, wide range of talents and all of them good. So, it was a great show. Thanks for those that worked on it.
Thank you. Mr. Schuman?
All right, well, thank you for, everybody for coming to council tonight. Want to thank staff, as usual, for, we're in our festival season, spring festival season. Had more of that this weekend with barbecue and other things going on. Really appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. And looking forward to a good 4th of July coming up, not too far from now. Early voting does start tomorrow here at city council, runs through Saturday. As the city clerk said at the start of the meeting, encourage you to all get out and vote and encourage you to get your friends out to vote. Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.